Wow, we had a good time, didn't you? I had a.
Okay, folks, if you wouldn't mind standing before we get the meeting started, I'd like to ask Ms. Charlotte to pray for us and I'll lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the privilege of coming to conduct the city's business. Ask that you would be with our commissioners, help them in the decisions they make. We pray for our country today as it's a very special day, is an election, and we ask that you would be with the men and women serving in the military. Please watch over them and keep them safe. Forgive us when we fail you and lead, guide, and direct us. For these things I ask in your most holy name. Amen.
Okay, folks, we'll call the regular meeting of the San Joe City Commission to order and thank you all for coming. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is the minutes of our last meeting, which was October 20th. Everybody's had a chance to look over those. If this is a correction, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So, Mr. Mayor. Motion by Commissioner Lowery.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hoffman. Any discussion on favor I, I, at the same time, motion passed three oh. We have one commissioner out sick today and I think Commissioner Langston will be here shortly. Haven't heard anything different from anybody, so I'm sure he'll be here. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, it's all yours.
Yes, Mayor, just a couple of things on the agenda. The first thing being, I know we spoke at the last meeting about the changes, but Ms. Bodine wanted to make some of the workforce development workings with the gym. I just need some direction as to what the board wants to do. Jim, I think spoke to her, might have something to add.
I did speak to Ms. Bodine and the question last week, I believe Commissioner Langston wanted to talk to her about a couple of things. But I did speak to her about the classroom referred to as the reading room. She said this is actually utilized for her equipment, iPads, laptops, those kind of things. She said if we needed to move things out, she would, but that's what she uses it for there. So basically, she has the reading room, the classroom to the right side for storage there. And the very back, she actually uses it for cold storage and refrigerators, tables, and those kinds of things are in the very back. She said that if she needed to move the stuff out, she'd be happy to. That's what she's currently looking for. They pay us $50 a month currently, liability insurance, keep the facility clean and open up in the afternoon for the summer or for the after school.
Is this a brand new lease or have we had this?
This is the one we had carried over from the last meeting on there. Commissioner Langston's joining us now. I've let him know that I did speak with Ms. Bodine. We were talking about the reading room, referred to as a little classroom. I'll get a chance to speak to her. But she said basically all she does in there now, she puts the laptops and the actual iPads in there now for storage, that if she don't need, if we need her to move the stuff out, she could.
It's only laptops and iPads. I think if you find always going to move them and you still can use it a tiny time, so I'm fine with that. Comfortable.
What staff recommendation is, and Attorney, the lease looks fine.
The lease is fine. She just has a couple of changes. It's the lease that everyone's been going. She'd like it to go back retroactive to August 20th, which is August of this year. There's no problems legally.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to approve the lease for workforce. So, okay, motion by Commissioner Lowery, there, second.
I second.
Okay, second, Commissioner Langston. Any discussion, any further discussion? Staff recommends approval. Any discussion from the audience, all in favor, I, I, at the same time, motion passed four and oh.
The only other thing I have on the agenda is specifically the commissioner fee as opposed to having signatures and the length of the terms of the office of the commissioners. And everything is still the same. We can do, change from a fee to signatures via an ordinance. There's plenty of time before the next election and it'd be a referendum with regards to the length of terms. I was gonna go talk to Supervisor Elections Hanlon and give a little bit more details on that, but it's kind of a busy time for him, so I figured I'd just leave it alone.
Good motion. Yeah, we got, I mean, we got time. We talked about this before. We talked about percentage of eligible voters to make it allowable to run by petition and so. I don't think you have a problem with that. We just need to talk about the, what percent we want. And then do we want to put the commissioner terms on the same ballot if we have an election? Do we want to throw that out there or make it four years instead of two years? So, we have time to decide that or we can talk about it today and move on. Anybody?
I'm still in support of allowing the public to vote. And we pretty much had agreed we would put it on the ballot whenever we actually had a ballot. Someone was challenged and we were gonna have a race. That way there was no cost to the city to have it on the ballot. But we had decided, I believe, that we didn't feel like it was needed to just put it on the ballot and then have to pay for it unless we had someone running.
Sure, yeah, right. Just have an election, just for those two items, costs us six, seven thousand dollars.
Right.
If somebody running for office, we had it on there because we got that expense anyway. It's just a matter of coming up with a percent that we feel comfortable with.
You recall Jim, what we talked about before?
With the, with the amount of the percentage to actually qualify, that actually can be done by resolution if I'm not mistaken. So, actually you can come up with, you just gotta figure out, okay, what's an appropriate number? Is that major number 10% or is it 10% of the registered voters? That's something for you to decide as to what you feel is an appropriate amount versus dollar amount to qualify. And then the other, as far as the actual term, basically we just need to bother the board to send a letter, I believe, at this point to Mr. Hanlon saying that we want to have it on our next ballot, our next city election.
Why don't we, if it's okay with the board, why don't we table this for next meeting and maybe Mr. Hanlon can be here? We got any questions we have for him concerning the hoops we need to jump through. And go from there because we got COVID that year anyway. And so if you got a problem with that, okay, so all right, we'll move. Move on, old business, Jim.
We had a, first item we have is COVID-19. We did see some changes coming down from the state that the attorney did send to me yesterday. We are required to go back to in-person meetings, which you are reading that requirement on there. Since that has been changed at the state level as far as the requirement on meetings. Still asking everybody to follow CDC guidelines and be safe. Maybe you got anything else from that?
No, just following the guidelines. All experts keep saying we're in for a long haul here soon. So, I hope we'll continue to be careful and be considerate and do what we need to do.
The governor's declaration of emergency expires on November the 4th. So, I was in Tallahassee yesterday and everyone was trying to get some type of indication from the governor's staff, is the governor gonna extend it or let it die? But we were not successful in getting any kind of hint. But I believe that expires midnight of the 3rd, which is tomorrow.
Well, we're not doing anything extraordinary that depends on that. We don't have any, we just have our declaration, which is not.
Right.
We're not telling anyone to do anything or not do anything.
Which I think we extended it last minute, last go around.
I think you're right.
Well, we'll know next meeting. We need to do something. I think that happens occasionally.
We'll see something, either way it goes, you know, it may be something different. So, I mean.
Yep, yep. Okay, next item.
Sir, the next item we have is a plat amendment for Summer Pines. Summer Pines actually falls under what used to be a PUD for Myers Park. It was done years ago by the St. Joe Company, which had set a guidelines for the PUD. The board approximately two months ago passed a plat that was approved with a setback of 15 feet. After further review by the developers, they would like to go back and roll it back to 10 feet, which is an allowable use on the PUD. The PUD would allow for it to go longer in production all the way down to five feet. And I think we have some representation here today that maybe you're answering the question may have. But we fall within the realm of the PUD and is allowable.
Okay, Grant, are you and your associate might come up and then they have some questions from the board?
And I've got some other handouts here to give as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
And this is Chase, he's with Truylin Homes.
We don't have a place to sign, Ms. Charlotte. I'll tell you, we better.
Okay, thank you all for having us.
Yes, sir. We'll get you to sign in and state your name and we got it covered on that.
Pick a house with a shorter address?
Right.
All right, so I'm Grant Rich here, kind of speaking on two, wearing two hats here. I'm a partner in the Summer Pines development and also represent Truylin Homes on the sales side out at South Gate here in Walk End at Summer Pines. So what we had is we had 21 lots out there. We sold Truylin 18 of them. After they made the purchase, they realized that there was two lots that their four plan did not fit on due to it being, I think, 75 feet one plan and 76 feet the other plan. Those were lots 19 and 20. After, we went back after talking with Mr. Andersons, we figured kind of the best route was to come back and just go get a change of setbacks on the entire development instead of just going and getting individual variances on 19 and 20. What are, the original, I think, and Mr. Anderson just said, the original PUD allowed for five, I think we had a couple avenues we could have avoided all this with. Is one, the first PUD had five foot setbacks and we could have just went with that. We would have met, we would have had no issues. The second avenue would have been, once, under the R1 zoning, if you're 100 foot, once you get 100 foot, it jumps that setback up to 15 feet. And so if we were just made on 99 foot, 11 inches, we would have been inside and able to fit our plans. So the current, the two plans we have that we're trying to build is, one's 1,900 square feet that you have in front of you, 1,961 to be exact. And the other one is, oh, I think I just handed, one of them, is like 2,000 and something square feet. And so anyway, we're, you know, right now it's a 100 foot lot with 15 foot setbacks. We'd be allowed to build a 70 foot plan and we need to own two of those lots. And we had no issue at all, you know, just going to those two lots and we don't need it for the whole deal. It's just 19 and 20. These are homes very similar. I'm sure you saw them right down the road in South Gate. Going to be, actually, we've already sold two of these. They bought 18, we sold two of the houses, one for, I think, 306,000, the other one for 394,000. So, I mean, I think we've got a really good product out there that, you know, make for a pleasant ride down Tom's Homestead Road. The, under the other PUD, you know, we have been able, I believe, plot 42, 50 foot lots. We decided to plot 21 100 foot lots to get, you know, more of a desirable yard. And boats in the back, you know, using, you know, everybody has boats and stuff. We're doing pole barns, you know, in the back. So we allow that in the back of the, towards the back of the lots. So anyway, we would just ask that you guys approve this to allow it from 15 foot setbacks to 10. You know, under the original PUD, we could have done five. You know, we need this to build a wider plan and you guys have that plan we want to build?
Grant, I'm looking at the.
Yes.
Plat in front of me here, very fine print. How do lots run from left to right? Is it one through 21?
The first one starts on the Jones Homestead end.
So that's lot one?
Yes.
And so you want to, 19 and 20 are your lots that you're having problems with?
Yes, sir, because our plan is 75 foot on one and 76 foot on the other one. So, like I said, if we would have done two things, either stuck with the original PUD, we'd been able to go up 90 foot plan. Or if we were just plotted these lots at 99, 11 inches, we would have been able to do a 79 foot plan. And, you know, we would have met those and unfortunately we didn't. We just put a 15 foot on there. And so that kind of got us messed up on those two lots. And so we're, you know, wanting to build a little wider product here. And on those elevations, you see, they've got brick on them, but they're actually gonna be hardy board, be very, very, very similar to the ones that are on Garrison Avenue down here in South Gate.
What about the other three lots? You got eight, you sold 18, you got three lots outstanding. Are they holding out or?
No, sir, and I actually was hoping before, you know, before the meeting, didn't get around to it. Was gonna get a letter signed by them, but talked to J.R. Grady on Stag Woods, talked to him. He has no issues at all. The other ones, Jason and Christie Lee spoke to them. They don't have any issues. I'm not sure who the other buyer is. I know Lisa.
So, those ones sold out, I don't even know who they are.
Oh, yes.
Those ones sold, all 21 basically have been sold.
Yes, sir, and they purchased 18 of them.
Is there an issue with the 18 that you have as far as needing a change?
Actually, it's just the first five that we have right there. We were planning on having this, this type of homestyle. And it's really just in order to offer more of a variety for those first five that we're looking at. That's what we were looking to adjust so that we can have five different plans versus three plans where we might have to duplicate one or two of them.
And first five coming from that end. So it wouldn't be one through, lots one through five, 21.
I just don't want to go through it and then focus on the two when we should have. Either we're gonna do it for.
Yes, sir, and that's kind of what Mr. Anderson, you know, I won't speak for him, but kind of what we decided in the, which I wasn't there, actually, my dad and him were met. But what kind of the best route they thought was to go ahead and do it as a whole instead of just coming and doing it on these two, even though we do not need it on the whole. We've already got the plans selected for all 18 lots. And these were the only two lots that were an issue. In fact, I think we already got five or six building permits and already started out there, so.
Commissioner Hoffman, you're correct. That was the concern there was you got 21 lots. If you're gonna give a variety of homes to people in there and if your neighbor noticed that they got a 10 foot, why not go ahead and do it for everybody at one time instead of having 21 different people go to planning board and have to do all the advertising and all the requirements?
That's the very reason we received an objection letter to the idea is I think it's fair to say it was someone that didn't have that same opportunity on the lots across the street.
Yes, sir.
We don't want to make that mistake again.
Yes, ma'am. But, so 21 lots are all as approved and so there's no idea about adding anymore. Trying to come back to us and increasing the density from 21 to something else?
No, sir, and, you know, under the, I think, you know, the original zoning, R1 zoning, you know, it's 31 acres there and it's five units per acre. So I believe we would have been able to get 155 units out there under the, I mean, I don't know with the wet ones and stuff like that. But it was originally five, it's R1, 31 acres. So, you know, we would have had, you know, that's 155 units. We did 21 and we've sold 18. These guys, you know, built about 400 homes a year and, you know, have no interest to come back. In fact, they've already started like on five of them, three or five out there. So we noticed, no, we don't want any more of that. We're happy with the product we have out there. And we're, you know, currently in the works on, you know, they kind of do a good job of differentiating product, different areas. And we're currently working with them on the, you know, on some other property behind the hostel and in between the hospital, that would be a different product. This is more of a wider product with an estate lot that would allow, you know, folks to do a pole barn behind the house, you know, out there if they want or not. But, and then kind of maybe the other product would be, you know, maybe an air lot, but this one just is an estate lot.
The only thing I had, I might have to abstain from the vote just because I've got a business relationship with a developer of the subdivision. But the only question I have was for staff. Jim, could they have came before the board with this plat and gotten the 10 foot initially?
It wasn't.
Based on our land development regulations?
Based on the PUD.
Okay.
PUD has separate setback requirement on the city. So based on the PUD.
That's all I.
Yeah, they could have had five.
Yeah.
The only thing I have is, I mean, they could have got five, you know, as for 10. It's gonna be on all 18?
Yes, sir, but we personally, or Truylin will only, is only, I mean, they've already got the plans, everything going, will only use that 10 and it's not even, you know, the full 10. That would be, it's actually, you know, they, the plan, the biggest, longest one is 76 foot. So they won't even use, getting their forfeit, still shy of what they, yeah, they, you could honestly.
It'll be over 10 and setbacks can be over 10 but less than 15.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I mean, you could probably go in and do a 12 foot, you know, it'd be right on the money. So we just went with 10. I think that's more of a norm.
Wouldn't it be easier just to amend the whole plat, Jim? That's, I think that's probably.
My only concern, Mayor, is, and learning that it was in the bud just now is new. So I think that's a big bonus for what you're asking. It's already in the bud, we agreed to the bud. I want to just make sure that it's not something that we should send back to the planning board because we have the planning board and I think they do a good job. That's my only concern is that we would be taking something away from the planning board. If y'all feel like that's something that doesn't necessarily need to be looked at, then I'll support moving forward.
Yeah, there are some questions about notice, I guess you would say. Selection label, people couldn't be here in support or objecting to it. That's one, one thing. The other thing, by putting it off two weeks, would, is it gonna delay your plans to get started on these, one of these houses?
I mean, there would be a little bit of a delay there.
Yeah, I mean, two week, a two week delay in the building industry, that's, that's not long.
Be more than two weeks. You have to go up on the planning board.
Well, I'm not going back going for the planning board. I'm just, I'm just talking about table it for two weeks to give anybody that had an objection because it's very short notice in the election, they could get here for various reasons. Just trying to make it fair for everybody, yes, you know.
And I'm not sure all the advertising requirements. I do know there's a sign out there that put a public notice out.
Right, right. So I'm, I'm just throwing that out for a discussion. Whatever the pleasure the board is, we'll move on.
My feeling is if it had not been on the bud and had not already been drawn and allowed, then I would probably take a very firm stance and send it back to the planning board and go through all those steps. But after hearing that it actually was on the bud, unless we're going to agree to send it to the planning board, I'm prepared to move forward and support the idea.
Okay, all right. I feel the same as I would. So I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Hoffman to approve the, I guess we would call this amendment to the plat agreement of Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, of the original plat agreement.
Plan amendment of summer.
Okay, is there a second? I'll send Commissioner Langston on second that. Okay. And knowing that we're only, we're not increasing the density and it's just a one-shot deal, that's what I understand.
Absolutely.
So, any further discuss, any discussion from the audience? Anybody like to speak to it? Okay, hearing none, motion in second, all in favor, I. Both same sign, motion passed three oh and one in standing.
Thank you. I'll get that, Chase.
Hey, Mayor, the next time we have a cross connection plan. The city currently has a cross connection plan that is actually pinned down from DEP. This refers to backflow preventers on irrigation systems and with our commercial businesses. At this point, we have sent out letters requiring people to come into compliance of these. But as an extra measure, if we don't have people that want to comply with what we have, we have an amendment here, some language that we added to it that would allow us to contact and contract to come in and do that work to make sure they're in compliance with DEP. That's what we have before you today.
I mean, this all satisfying DEP.
Yes.
That's all this new language and so forth that just lets them know that we are proactive as far as their requirement for cross connections.
Yes, it's been on the news across Southwest Florida. This is a requirement here on page 23. There's where we added the language that's indicated red that says, but if you should a customer not install or fail to test, a backflow device is required after notification period. The city shall have the work performed and bill the customer for the actual cost of absentee services performed. That's the only.
Fair enough. Need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the cross connection plan amendment. Okay, Commissioner Langston made a motion, there's a second for that?
Second, for discussion.
Second, Commissioner Hoffman, for discussion, go ahead.
Is this statewide program? And how long has it been in effect?
This is 30 years. This particular statute turned out for about 20 years. Unfortunately, they never really enforced it up until the last year, this past year.
Oh, okay.
So it's been on the books for a very long time and became very serious about it. And we do have, there's probably 20 or 30 right now in the city that have not complied that we'll have to issue secondary letters to and hopefully they do comply. If not, then we'll have to move into this to satisfy the state.
So walk me through the process now if I was building a new building, house, or business. How do I know that this is something I would have to have installed?
Well, it would be actually during the planning review on our behalf. You know, we would notify them that statutory requirement is necessary to have an RPC or a DDB or whatever it may be. So we would notify them.
Through the building department, is that how they?
Through the planning review building department or through Mike and the water when they come and connect for the water. Two of those are Mike and I do it now.
Oh, okay.
Is, you know, he'll know before he sells that they're required to do this.
And how long have we been required to do this?
Since June. Since, that's when the state came down on us. We issued our first round of letters in June, giving everyone this 10 to 30 if they comply. You know, we had 20, 25 irrigation customers that didn't. Those are pretty easy, just turn them off because that's actually back on the customer. What we're talking about now is we have businesses that are required statutorily to have, you know, RPCs because they're a pun law or something to that effect. So they're not complying. We've also been allowed commercial businesses, fire protection, that haven't complied to make sure or test their equipment so it works. Now, obviously, we can't and we're not, we should fire especially them all. But if they don't comply, then I think it's up to us to do our work to make sure they are compliant. That's the cost that is passed on.
What's the average cost?
I'm on the six inch fire protection, I'm not sure. I mean, we have. Well, in this particular case, we don't know. Well, in this particular case, we don't know. We've never been there before. So we don't know what, you know, plumber may charge. And what my recommendation would be is that we go out and R F D and we bid that. Before we get to that point, if we can't achieve compliance.
Yeah.
You know, with a secondary license, maybe even a third. If we're fortunate, I, I think my recommendation would be to go out for bid. You know, request those for three or four or ten plumbers, and then we can read through the cost and the investment and stuff.
Yeah, that's my only concern, approving that we're going to send someone a bill for work that we did on their behalf, and we really don't know how much money that is in this.
No, and I, I don't, I think before we get to that point, again, we have to bid those services out, so we know what the board needs to approve that, based on a little bidder.
So we're going to, uh, send the second round of letters out after this vote, right?
Okay. And then, again, we'll evaluate, and then maybe have to send the third round out. But at some point, it may be who's going to go out for R F D to have whomever that plumber and contractor is on, you know, contract to, to resolve.
Mayor, this would actually be passed under resolution two thousand twenty dash oh eight. That's what I was clarifying, I was figuring. If this was issued to the board, then that's what it would be called.
All right, your second stand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. A motion and a second, and discussion, any discussion from the audience? All in favor, I. I O, same sign, motion passed four and O.
Resolution two thousand twenty dash oh eight, a resolution of the city of Port Dixie, limiting the cross-connection people.
Uh, moving on to new business, First Island First Street Scott Grant Agreement. This is actually, will be the third phase of the Scott Grants that we received. We are wrapping up the phase two on Garrison Avenue, uh, up to this building here currently on Garrison Avenue. This would actually go back to First Street from Highway ninety-eight to seventy-one. We'll just need to approve the grant agreement, so we can send it back and get, uh, in queue for funding. I believe this will not come in through ways until two, twenty-one, twenty-two.
Do we have engineering plans or anything ready for this that we want to use it for or not?
We have a schedule of fees and, and actually preliminary. We don't have a full schedule.
Now, this was, we, we just have a concept, we're, we're prepared to secure the grant. This was basically what this approval would give a pass for the create plan.
And once again, that's for First Street and seventy-one. And, and guys, uh, as you go down First Street, as you know, it's in bad shape from sewer. So there are not any reason in the world to pave that street without fixing the sewer first. So, so we, we just got to, we got to start looking, uh, for some money to, uh, fix sewer on First Street, because it's heavily traveled, but it's in bad shape. You go, you got Chicken House branch, uh, area there that's filled in with muck. It's always sinking, so, uh, there's a lot of work we need to do before we pay. So, uh, that's, uh, past him, this Charlotte, gone, everybody concerned and look for money for fixing sewer and or stormwater and water on First Street. All right.
We get a motion to approve.
Okay, sure. First Street Scott Grant Agreement, we need a motion to go forward with that. I'll make that motion. Got it. My, Mr. Lowery, second.
Second.
Second, by Commissioner Langston, any further discussion? All in favor, I. I O, same sign, motion passed four and O.
City B G D R Workshop. We have been working hard with our engineers, grant writer, city staff, trying to put together these grants. These are huge grant applications that we're preparing. And as part of the requirement, we need to have a workshop to present it to you and to the public to move forward on the deadline of November thirtieth. So what we're proposing is to, on the tenth, to have a workshop at, and our grant writer be here to, you know, this is what we're presenting. That's okay with everybody?
Glad, glad to talk to you and, and what's going on. Uh, would that workshop, you'd think, take longer than an hour?
I would assume we're probably looking at about an hour, about a, or a half.
Uh, the reason I say that, uh, on down on the engineer, we're still working on this Nerdogram. And, uh, and we gotta have a workshop on that. And I thought maybe, since we're here next Tuesday, we could do, one o'clock, we could have a workshop on the Nerdogram. So that would put us here probably noon to, something like that.
Mr. Jim, would we have time to announce the workshop with paper?
You don't necessarily have to have the Nerdogram. As far as doing a display ad in the paper for the Nerdogram, it's not a mere requirement, but it's just to wish to.
Okay.
Oh, Josh, is that, could you meet Quinn, uh, next Tuesday at one o'clock, possibly for a Nerd workshop?
Let's go ahead and schedule it, we'll make it work.
Okay. All righty. Everybody good with that? So we'll have two workshops next Tuesday. We got to move forward with that thing or, or not?
Because this won't be one of our regular schedules, Mr. Jim. If we, once we get the rest from the board, we'll still have to have, for the record, we'll still have to have another, one day workshop.
Yeah. And, and I think this workshop's more for us to get on board with moving forward with, with the thing. We just got to decide if we want to move forward, jump through the hoops that the Northwest Florida asks us to jump through. And, and so we'll start doing that. Okay.
All right. Uh, the next item we have is R F P two thousand twenty dash eighteen, Cape San Blas Keepers Quarters, prepared for Eglin. If you'll turn to your handout, we did open up bids on Friday. We received two bids, and they were very, very close. One from Monolith, uh, for sixty-six, three seventy, and Collin Construction sixty-six, two eighty-one. Uh, I think both of them are very reputable companies. Both of them have done good work in our community and for the city on several projects. So at this point, based on where we have staff recommendations, go with the low bidder. Uh, Mr. McCord does have the money, I believe, in the actual issue, it's supposed to cover the cost of the project.
Is Collins who built the bathroom on Reed?
Yes.
Okay.
And he's done repair work and built ramps and so forth at Cape San Blas Quarters in the past.
Yeah.
Anyway, so I'll entertain a motion to accept a little bit of Collin Construction for the Eglin repairs and the whole shit, root. So. There's a motion, Commissioner Hoplin, second.
I'll say it. I got just one question.
Okay, sure.
Discussion. Go ahead. Jim, those, those bids apples, apples to apples?
We had talked to both of them and explained exactly what we want, Mr. Jim.
Okay. My second.
All righty. Any further discussion? All in favor, I. I O, same sign, motion passed four and O. All right.
Uh, the next item we have is, uh, in reference to building code, Commissioner Langston, want to talk to you and maybe about it?
Um, I was just concerned that, you know, people are coming, uh, putting sheds, uh, up around their, their homes, and, um, don't really know, uh, the codes and regulations of, of, um, how to put it up and, and the different things that they need to get from the building department in order for it to be put up, um, correctly and by codes. And, um, I just want, um, to see if there's any kind of way that we can, um, let people know and, um, get an understanding of, of what they need to do in order to get these buildings put there legally. Um, we have them coming up, um, all over the place. We have different, uh, disagreements with, with, with us, the city. And, um, and I, I was sent a few things on, on an email about the Florida statute. And, um, and, um, it was reading something which I, I thought that, you know, um, exceeded, um, what our, um, codes work. I called, um, Clint to get a better understanding. I talked with Jim to get a better understanding of it. And, um, I just like for us to, um, let citizens know, um, what they need in order to get these buildings put, um, on their property, because you just can't buy the building and just sit at there without going through the building department to get certain things done. And, um, but without them knowing that, which is, you know, ignorance is, is not an excuse. But I think that it benefits us if, if they knew before it gets, before they do it, because there's only called, uh, problem, you know. Um, what I was sent was a, a statute, I read the clinic, and, uh, he said that, that didn't, uh, I don't want to put my word in.
It didn't supers, the person still has to follow our building regulations, get a permit, the place, and follow the setbacks, do that type of stuff.
Right.
As long as the building's underneath that statute, that's the building's fine. We still have to go through the permitting requirement.
Right. So I just want people to know that, you know. Uh, that was my concern, because we have them coming up all, uh, all over the place. And, um, they're not getting put there legally.
The, the seller of these things are supposed to let the buyer know that. But of course, they're selling, so they want to sell, and they're not worried about the consequence. So they're just selling and putting it out there. I think they, they know that, but it's, it's not happening. And I, I don't know, Jim, or you, you, your client got a, maybe a solution to that, uh, education of the public type problem.
You're right. Some, some companies are really good about it, and, and they'll pull the permits for them. Others, I think they'll sell it to them and just deliver it, won't tell the homeowner exactly what the requirements are. I kind of think of it kind of like call, dig, uh, call before you dig. Same theory on, if you're going, if you're going to consider remodeling your house, or if you're going to add on to your house and bring a new structure in, call Kelly or call Eric at the building department. That's the main thing, is.
I put a little, little blurb on the bottom of our utility bill, uh, remind folks, uh, before you build, remodel, bring in auxiliary structures, you need a permit. I mean, you could, you could do that in almost two sentences at the bottom now. That would be, you know, hopefully they would read it, pay attention. But that might be one, one way, uh, to let folks know that they can't just bring one in. And, uh, I know you can't get power to it legally or, or a sewer. Uh, if they just put it on the back of the lot or something, I don't think you can. But that's another reason you need, we need to educate.
Um, I was also told that the company that they were dealing with said that, um, it was the first time that, that they put, um, many buildings, um, in, in St. Joe. That's the first time that we've ever asked for a permit. I don't think that could be true. I guess, you know, like you said, they, they try to sell, sell something, so they're going to do whatever they can to get rid of it. But that's what I was told. I just wanted to put it out there so that people would know, know you can't do that, you know.
Can we, can we do that, Miss Charlotte? Y'all come up some little bit of language on the bottom utility bill, work with Jim and Mike, and let's, uh, let's, uh, just put a little blurb on there, you know, in red or, or whatever. But at least, uh, we're trying to educate the public on what needs to be done.
I have a note for it, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it, yes, sir. Next item.
Yes, sir. The last item I have on there, we're talking, Commissioner Lowery, we're talking about the Parkson Rex position and the CRA slash project manager.
Yeah, the only thing I had is, uh, we had filled that position, and, um, Jim, can you mention about, um, Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, sir. Um, when we spoke last week, the indications were, um, Mr. Kennedy was not interested. Talked with him on short, as Kenny was. I talked to him on Monday, and he said he was interested in the CRA portion of the, uh, the, uh, project manager side. So plan is to move forward that side on there to get that short up, because we gotta have somebody to help us out with the compliance and the quick books and everything on the CRA side. We still have the position that y'all allow for, for the part-time during the, uh, spring for is the, uh, volunteer. That, that we've not moved forward on, but that's the plan.
Yes, sir. Um, I want to make sure what I heard was clear in my mind. You said that he's interested in the CRA portion of the job that we had agreed we were going to hire and fill, which was, in my mind, it was a project manager. And then you would also take the responsibility, what little bit of responsibility would occur.
I think that's what he's interested in.
So he would be doing the part, the project manager part as well as the CRA part?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay.
What you did was, in the budget, you put twenty-five thousand dollars in for that position, and then you gave us thirteen oh eight to hire a part-time person for Johnny Parks and Rex in them.
Okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't just CRA-connected projects, because we got a lot of projects that are outside.
Any projects that you saw.
Okay, okay, good. I'm glad to hear that he's interested in.
And, uh, I mean, he'd be the one with the most experience, most knowledge of what's going on now, and he's going to have to get on board, and it's up to Jim to hire him. If, uh, they finally, I hope, get him to, to do that. So, uh, I'm, I'm hoping he will, because, uh, it's, it's going to make it easy on all those, I think. To have somebody in there that knows what's been going on.
That's all.
And then we'll wait on the Parkson Rex side, uh, in spring, is that what you're saying?
The idea was to, uh, finger to Grant, I was thinking, during the spring, to get some help when it's time to start taking Kevin's block.
Okay, all right. Any other new business? Let's move on to Mr. Grant.
Mayor, I have nothing. Let's go to his questions.
Uh, six drainage, uh, issues, uh, Jason, uh, Jason White, I believe, construction, is that done? And everybody happy?
He is finished. We are moving on to the ass build side of that now. So we're waiting on a survey crew to come in hopefully towards end of the week to shoot all the elevations, make sure everything is built correctly. Um, and then once that's done, that project will be completed. Depending on issues.
Right, right. But if there are issues, it's all over Jason White?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I did, uh, speak to one of the homeowners, would be on the south side of the alleyway. And they were asking if we could extend or put one more section of pipe. I guess, uh, it would give them more room to access their backyard.
Mr. Backton, I've looked at that, and I think we're still, to some degree, still looking at that. Um, if he wants to come up and speak to that, he's welcome to, Josh. Um, I think there's some questions on what we can and can't do.
And on private property?
No, it's not on private property. It's an elevation issue.
Yeah, that, isn't that the lot that brought in lots of dirt and slugged the dirt at some point?
And he is, uh, just taking the first look at it. So the length of that pipe was a like-for-like replacement, and it's forty-eight linear foot, which is pretty large for a driveway access. But if you extend that pipe back to the west, further, that grade actually climbs. So the cover of that pipe is going to be less and less and less. And I'm afraid if you extend too much, what's going to happen is the road is going to have to come up a little bit with it from the shoulder. To be able to grade into it, you may end up pushing water off of that road into the lot that has the fence behind it. And that lot is draining well right now, because you have a positive slope falling all the way to the pipe. But if you keep backing up, it's going to be hard to drain the lot. Then you may end up with pushing floodwaters onto the lot that's draining correctly right now.
And that's the very reason my response to two of the people that called me is to tell them, I'm not an engineer. What you, what you're saying makes sense, but I'm going to leave that to an engineer. Uh, so I appreciate you.
We can look at it more, but just from a quick glance, I feel like you would have to do some grading on private property in order to get that other lot to potentially run to it if you extend that pipe.
Yeah. Well, my fear was, just what you were saying could possibly happen. We fixed that one issue, and now we've created two more. So that's why I'm going back what you suggest and we'll move forward.
Yeah, you, right in the design, you use a twelve by eighteen elliptical pipe. And usually when you see elliptical pipe used, you have a cover, you're close to having a cover issue anyway, because the pipe is shaped as an ellipse. So you're able to come over it. So you, you don't have a lot of room to work with. So the design as it is, I feel like, it, it appears that it's working well from what I can see.
Yeah, I hate to know that we, we spent that kind of money on a project and, and we're giving.
And one thing, too, we're gonna, we're gonna have to watch is our. And one thing too, we're gonna, we're gonna have to watch is our property owners gonna take it on their own, start bringing dirt in, moving stuff around, I don't know what uh, what rights we have as far as they have to get a permit to do that.
The best thing you could do is have the ass build sort of like that.
Well, that's the kind of, that's a must, we have to, gotta to make sure, A, that Jason White put it correctly, I believe he did, uh, but B, so we haven't had a record drawn in.
Good, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else for John, guys? Alright, moving right along, uh, Mr. Larry's back there, you got anything Larry on service?
No, no, Mr. Larry, thank you, uh, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay, any, anybody on Larry in this department? Come on up, he's Kevin.
Yeah, so we're, we're still discharging as hard as we can, you know, getting the pond down, so we're two, two-nine right now, so we're probably into the month before we get the pipe working on it again, which means we're probably discharged December, we take that month off and pick up, throw the water back on the field in January. One of the issues we do have, and just to prep everybody, we're gonna have to spend some money on one of the filter pumps. Um, I'm trying to get, the pumps are German made, it takes, uh, two years ago, when I had to rebuild one, it was fourteen weeks plus to get a part, so you just can't hardly parts these things. So trying to get an American made pump and a replacement, so I can get parts in days, not months. Um, so we're limping right now, we're not pushing as much water out as we could, the air language is functioning correctly. I'm working with the company that's making the, the filters themselves to engineer me some different, you know, pumps that will, that will have made for just our stuff. We're looking at probably around ten grand or something. If we get a German pump, it's eight grand, and it takes a while to get it, it's replacing kind of, so that's what I'm looking to do, and we're having a little bit of, I can't really tell you if it's gonna be, it's gonna be close to the money that we're expecting to spend, it's in my budget, but that's gonna have to be coming out from December. And then it won't be that certain, you know, small amount of time and the other, your sister pumps, the other is gonna do the same. So, you know, if I'm sitting ten grand on one, then there's gonna be a point where I'll have to move money around in my budget to get the other done this way off, so I might scrap something that I've got from this year, put a pump in place, but that's kind of what we're dealing with now. So, everything else is doing, it's on track, you know, everything else is done, we're just a little slower than the board, so we'll get the pond going down.
Alright, done good? Questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, gentlemen. And Mike?
FEMA, a quick FEMA update, we have received the two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand of the four-hundred-and-eighteen, uh, and we've submitted, I've submitted the necessary paperwork for the remaining amount, and that's in process, so we still should receive almost that full four-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, um, so that's good news.
Yes, it is.
And everything else with FEMA is still moving along and most of that is still uh, in their court on, on the remaining open projects.
Was that four-hundred-and-eighteen reflected in the current budget, the full amount?
It, it was, it was not included in the full budget and, and that, that two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, uh, we transferred out of the operating into our contingency account, so we put it in savings, basically.
Good.
Okay, there's a uh, request here, liability insurance for Pioneer Bay Community Development Corporation?
Yep, uh, uh, this is related to the community garden that Commissioner Langston's been working on, uh, initially they had uh, an agreement with the garden club to, to supervise that, uh, but they elected not to move forward because they, they felt it was a liability issue, uh, and then, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe at that point, Mr. Langston worked with Pioneer Bay to try to find an organization to, to cover the liability issue for the community garden.
Uh, we um, basically, um, I'm gonna really honor them, because they're a nonprofit, and um, they wrote a check for the liability uh, insurance, uh, I think we budgeted, I think it was twenty-five hundred for the community garden, and um, the question was for them to um, pay that six-hundred and, what was it, my sister?
Uh, six-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars.
So, so us to take that money out of the budget and reinvest it for uh, for that, that check, for the insurance. Once we get the insurance uh, paid, we'll be moving forward with um, the community garden, hoping they will be ready to plant by uh, next year.
Uh, I'm a little confused, I'll take it through, oh, number one, of course, we've been full support for the community garden since, since day one, and the property is owned by St. Joe Company, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the community garden was, was something that the city was, that we were kind of sponsoring, is that right? Since we allocated twenty-five hundred dollars toward the community garden, I guess where I'm going with this is, if the city's, if this is a city project, then it should be under the city, we have a agreement with St. Joe Company and we pay, they're under our liability insurance. Am I missing something, Jim, or what?
That is one way to do it.
I mean, well, St. Joe Company, uh, I talked with Mr. Gonzalez, and St. Joe Company wanted us to, uh, when we were under the garden club, they wanted us to uh, have some liability insurance.
Right, that's right.
So, garden club, the garden club stepped out and CDC stepped in, so um, that's how they came about and to help us uh, get the liability insurance and therefore taking the place of the garden club.
Okay, I, I was confused too, and because I read through the, the request and what confused me was, unless I'm reading it wrong, and I asked for the attorney to speak on this, what I read is this is a general liability policy for an organization, which would be, they would be having liability insurance for the term of the, of the policy anywhere that they had business conducted, and we are talking about insuring a specific site, which is the garden club, or the garden, the community garden, and I think we can get insurance for probably a hundred bucks, um, for the site of the garden, but the quote is to insure the group and, and all that that group does throughout the timeframe of the coverage, and that's what confused me about it.
Um, I don't think that was, that's what it was meant to be for.
Because I don't think it ever mentions the location of the community garden and the policy, and that's what I kept looking for and looking for, and then I realized, well, this is a quote for a group, a nonprofit group, like if Kiwanis Club, I'm sure, and the men's club and, and the garden club would be another, they all have to have some type of liability that covers them for the year, or if it's a five-year policy, for five years, and I think that's what this is, it may be way overkill from what we're trying to accomplish, that was, that's where I got.
Yeah, I think, uh, if you're, if you're through, I'll.
Yes, sir, that's all I had.
And I think where it's going, Commissioner Langston, is we're opening up a giant, giant can of worms here, if we're paying for liability insurance for a, a nonprofit, because if we are, then we might have a lineup out the door soon for us to help them with theirs, and, and he mentioned the garden club, Kiwanis Club, uh, on and on and on, so I, I think we, it's gotta be more specific for that side, because that's what the intent was.
Uh, I understand, and yeah, um, the, the, the intention, the intention was not to uh, to um, to have insurance for um, CDC to take care of the, the, um, their liability, the intention was uh, to uh, take care of um, the property that, that the garden.
But it doesn't say that, that's the thing, it says a general liability policy, that's what, that's what it says, and, and if we, if we have to rearrange it, restructure it, whatever, I don't know why the city didn't sponsor the garden to start with.
I, um, I, um, when I bought the garden, when I bought the garden up.
Yep.
You know, um, I don't know why we didn't either, but I was struggling, you know, well, me and, and my, and the committee for the garden club were struggling trying to get someone to um, to um, to support us as far as a nonprofit, so that we can move forward, but uh, the garden club did step, the garden club did step in, but uh, without its, uh, without the insurance, they, they backed away, so CDC, well, I think was kind enough to come in and let us um, umbrella under them, so, but if we can, we have to restructure and figure out what to do, uh, as far as uh, insurance, that's fine, my only, my only uh, goal is to get this, get this done, you know, so whatever, whatever it takes for us to get it done, um, that's, that's, that's what my thinking is.
Right, yeah.
I, I got a question, Mr. Langston. Is, is the lease with us, the city?
We don't have one, that's what I was gonna, I think you're right on spot on, what I was gonna say was that, do we know we had St. Joe Company would allow for us to have a lease on the property, meaning it's probably that lease is gonna require us to be an additional insured on our, our listing, that's generally how that works on there, is that you'll get a lease, and as I feel like Commissioner Lauer was saying, and then the insurance will be as an additional insured, meaning that we will cover St. Joe Company if something was perhaps not, while we had a lease on that property, that would be the easiest way probably, and then, then the city commissioner, he could be in charge of the garden club on there, or the garden itself on there, and we could do whatever we want, so I'm thinking about it.
Now, Eric, do you, do you already have a lease, don't you already have a lease with St. Joe Company, and they said, you're gonna have to have liability insurance, is that, or was the lease with the garden club, or?
No, it was um, it was St. Joe Company, and um, they were saying that you would have to have uh, liability insurance, in order for them to um, let us use the property.
Well, can you, do you mind work getting with, with Clint, and, and let's see if we can get a lease from St. Joe Company for that property, and ask them what they're gonna require of us, which we already know, they're gonna require liability and put them on there as additional insured, and we have to get a separate policy, Jim, or would we do it under the city's general liability?
Normally in a situation like, we need to find out what St. Joe Company requires from us, but normally what we do is we call our insurance company, we'll say, we need a, we need a certificate of additional insurance, which probably doesn't help out.
Right, okay, is that okay?
Typically with HR.
Yeah, exactly.
Get this thing going before spring when it's time to plant. Okay, uh.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Alright, sir. Mr. Engineer, come on up.
Alright, we'll run through the list real quick, um, we heard of Stormwater, I think we've already spoken about both of those, personally, Spark Park and have a meeting next to you, discuss the path forward on that one. Um, the second one is a Stormwater master plan, we're still working through that, we did complete in math, um, so we're working on the draft report now and expect to have that as a draft by eleven eighteen, um, basically the next steps after that draft report will be able to, will be to make up the proposed improvement recommendations and finish the final report. I don't have a timeline on what that final report will be, but our draft is, we're still shooting for that eleven eighteen deadline. Um, walking path, Fort City Trail, we're still waiting on Duke Energy to sign the federal paperwork, I spoke with the county, uh, they were gonna reach out again, we were able to talk with the EP and get them to reduce the amount of federal paperwork, they always require certain provisions to be signed, we've never had an issue with it before, but evidently Duke has a lot of attorneys looking at this federal paperwork, so I'll be following up with the county in our morning meeting tomorrow to see if they were able to execute that, but that is the only thing that's holding up the start of the project. DP has approved everything, or, everything we've sent is, Duke accepting the federal provisions that all the other contractors have accepted. Um, CEBG Sewer, um, we've got the tentative start date is, is eleven one on there, which the clock has already started, I did speak with the contractor today, his plan is to mobilize on the week of the sixteenth, and he's going to, they will be at least for the first week, week to a week and a half, they'll be doing the CCTV and the cleaning, um, so the plan there is for, to get through that in the first week to a week and a half, so it looks like he will actually be on site week of the sixteenth to begin that.
You, you, you positive on the sixteenth?
That's what he communicated to me this morning, so I checked with him before I came. Um, if anything changes, he's actually supposed to be here tomorrow, so I'll have, um, one of my guys at office meeting, when anything's gonna change, obviously. Um, Garrison Avenue Scott, looks like they're about to wrap up the strip, and so I'm hoping to have a walkthrough either end of this week, first of next week, to close that job out. Um, First Street Lit Station, Long Avenue Sewer, uh, Jim, John, myself and Philip met on that last week and discussed kind of how the construction will be phased, how we do things, and we're moving forward with getting the bid package together, um, in hopes to get an advertisement and let that out. Superstar District, uh, water sewer grant application, um, I'm gonna tie this one in with the CDBG DR, which is not on the list, but as everyone, I'm assuming, is aware that the CDBG DR grants are due on November thirtieth, and we're working um, with the grant writer out of DC, um, they put pretty tight deadlines, but this is a fast-paced project, so we actually made what I'm gonna call a ninety percent submitted to the grant writer yesterday for the fire relief station and also for the sewer, which will encompass this downtown sewer as well, so we will pull this estimate out of that CDBG DR sewer, but we prioritize the CDBG DR grant based on its timeline to get that information in person. So, right now, we're just waiting on feedback from the grant administrator, but we do have a submission in as far as information they need for both of those projects at this time.
The uh, Panama City Bay County submitted, uh, what's in the paper yesterday, a sixty-eight million dollar uh, grant request under the same uh, same grant uh, application, so uh, we gotta get busy.
We got everything into them, we just waiting on them to send it in, but it, it, they, you know, they feel confident enough, ten million dollar ask per grant application, so we're working with them, um, city peers moving forward, don't have any issues at this point to report.
Fantastic. What else we got? Anything else for Josh? Anybody? Alright, let's move on to code enforcement.
Yes, sir, we got two code enforcement officers, as Commissioner Langston told us earlier, they are, they are being very proactive, they're working with the community, communities calling them on issues, people that don't have permits, through structures that need to be taken care of, there was a hearing last Thursday for five more, uh, that, that were non-compliant, so basically where we're at now, we're in the window that don't have an extra number of days, once the special master gives us order to come and comply, if they do not, then they will come before the board and see if we're ready to take action on those, because we took down one structure last week, we've had good compliance from the community too, and some that have done themselves, but you look around, things are moving fast, and we appreciate people working with us, and, Sarah, please, make sure, if you're gonna do building, make sure you get your permit. make sure you get your permits. And if you got problems with your home, please take care of them. Make sure they're in compliance.
I see our special master just walked in. Anybody got any questions for him? He, he heard the five cases last week and said nobody, nobody showed up to comment one way or the other, so he's moving forward with what he needs to do with that.
Around town, we're, we're getting back on our feet. You know, it's been two years. It's time. We, we've gave people adequate a period of time to try to come into compliance, and now it's time to try to move forward.
Yeah. I just got one thing. When, when about that RV that we're gonna have in the D?
I know, I know Mr. Burkett and, you know, went over there and talked to him on there. Do you know if it's still there or not?
It is still there.
Is it there? Okay, I'll double check. But yes, I know they did go and talk to the homeowner. That's, that's another issue we've had with people that are just in the middle of the night and bringing RV in and tie it in and go to living in there. So please understand that it's gotta be a permanent structure. They're not allowed in the city of Port St. Joe.
Yeah, this is property on there?
It was on Avenue B. I am not sure it was...
You want me to make you mine? I can't, I don't know. I'll give you a color and let you know, though. I think, well, we've got, just FYI, we've got five more hearings next week.
Okay. Escobar, I think, was the property on, if I'm not mistaken. I think it's about...
I don't remember that name.
I think it's...
That's something, while we're on that, we probably need to go ahead and discuss it. I'll let him when he gets through talking. Something we need to discuss and bring out. I know I wasn't on the board at the time of, right after the hurricane, this board gave folks that had damaged homes permission to live in a trailer while their home was being repaired. Two years later, we still have people living in the trailer and not doing any work on their home. So at some point in time, we're gonna have to step up our enforcement or either send them letters, whatever we need to do. So, you know, we need to see some active work going on to get you back in your home, which we wanna do, but we're not gonna allow you to live in a trailer in the city. Come, come up, Mr. Mallory.
No, I'm not coming up there.
Yeah, you did. We can't talk.
I talked to Code Enforcement Officer Burkett about that issue last week.
Okay.
And I, I said it's time to give people notice that...
Yep, did that two years? Yep, that's plenty. This board's been very generous in that regard, so we may need to... And that's happening all over this area that got damaged. I hear it coming out of Callaway and then even in Panama City there, Mexico Beach, they're having the same issue. They have to get a little stricter. So we may need to talk about it.
And people work hard. Look around town. Town people really work hard to get us coming back here. Who does the people in enforcement do? But we do have a few that, that need some...
Okay, no, Police Department, come right up.
Okay. The only thing I have today is we're doing some enhanced traffic enforcement. The last past two weeks, we've been concentrating on Garrison Avenue, where we received a million complaints, complaints of cars running sixty, seventy miles an hour. We hadn't logged anything going near that fast, but there are a lot of speeders. We've made a lot of stops and rode a couple tickets. Next two weeks, we're gonna be concentrating on Avenue A. And we're gonna keep going around the city and kinda putting that out on social media to get it out there that you need to slow down on the streets.
I think Seventy-one Fifth Street has some issues, especially eleven thirty to one o'clock hour, and then from the about quit time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. They had no offense, they've got...
Yes, sir.
So, anyway, you're working your way around. I'm sure you'll, you'll get there. Questions for Chief?
Did y'all pull the data off the sheriff's radar that sat on Garrison for quite some time?
We actually put it out there four different times, and all four times, it was not downloaded.
We need to see about getting our own. I think there's a lot of use for that, that machine, and it can be useful to show the data, because some people feel...
It's a good deterrent.
Yeah, I mean, the facts are right there.
It does a complete traffic study for you, so they are a good tool to have. They had one. Now it's probably, I think it's still out there in the, I think, but it's probably twenty years old at this point, but it, it lasted about ten years.
It sounds like the sheriff's, I mean, they're gracious enough to let us use it, but I think it has problems. I know twice that I wanted to see the data myself, and it never is sending the data. So I want you to see if we can find a grant or something, and we buy it all.
Last year at League of Cities meeting, they had two different stations there that they had those. The one I saw particularly by us, it actually bolted on. You didn't roll it along or anything. You even moved it around, just bolted on a existing sign, a street sign or something, and saves the data and so forth. So they're out there if we can afford to have one.
I'll check on one thing. I knew like the signs that are at the school zone, the flashing speed signs, just the way they sit, they're about fifteen hundred dollars a piece. And it wouldn't take anything but a computer board to, to make it keep the data, because it's already got everything it needs to collect the data there. So I'll check and see if I can find one like that. The only thing I've ever looked at is the speed trailer, so I'll see if...
Yeah, I don't think I can find one that good. All right, any other questions? Your first month in office, okay? Getting things left good?
It's been great. We're still building things out, but you're in the station? I'm happy to be back in the station. I have someone to be back.
Yeah.
And hopefully, our roofer, he'll get unbusy and fix the roof. Still got some, the outside walls leaking in between the bridge from the cap of the roof. And he's gonna come in and seal that and put the cap back on that. Hopefully, that'll fix a few of the leaks. Right now, it's only costing us a few sealing dials, but hopefully, he'll get on that pretty soon.
And I had a question.
Yeah, I was gonna ask him if he would look at Bow Street and Avenue D. There is a little hump in that road.
That ramp, yeah.
And what happens is some of those cars are coming, and if they're at a certain speed, they literally come up in the air. I was just having to be on the porch one day, and I seen a vehicle come by, and it almost lost control. Because what happened, if they hit that speed limit thing over forty miles an hour, they literally come up in the air. And so that's an area I pray to get a look at also.
Yes, sir.
There is that little hump there.
Yes, sir.
If they're speeding, they will almost lose control.
Yes, sir. I've been on emergency call down that road going fast, and I know exactly what you're talking about. It's like a ramp, yeah.
I'd just like to say, I've been seeing the guys out, doing a pretty good job. Let them know that we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Definitely have a new AD. It's like NASCAR when I look...
Yes, sir. I'm working with John. I actually had a couple points, other points to make, but the scuff grant or whatever took care of this part of Garrison as far as new road signs. Most of our traffic signs, like speed limit signs, are like forty, fifty years old. They don't even reflect anymore. They're so old. So me and John's gonna work together to replace ones on Avenue A in the far end of Garrison here. And I'm gonna be going around taking note which signs they can replace. Try to get some of that done. Which does help. I mean, we can't be everywhere all the time. People speeding on every street, but we're trying, we're trying to concentrate and get it out there that we are looking and writing tickets.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Pierce?
I'm gonna give you an update on The Ghost on the Coast. It was very successful. We had ninety-three entrants in the costume contest of different divisions. I had a lot of help getting it together. Appreciate everyone, the judges, it all helped. We're looking forward to next year. We're receiving numerous calls on our Christmas on the coast, and I hope I can count on each one of you to be in the parade on December the twelfth. Line up at five. We'll move out at six. It's the second Saturday. You want golf cart, whatever you would like to enter. Just please let me know you're gonna be there, and we'll have a spot for you.
Of course.
Thank you, sir.
Can we ride a horse if we chose to?
If you have the bag or the scoop. Right. Been down that road before.
If you'll ride it, I'll find a horse.
I know, you can get me a little horse.
All right, we're down to citizens to be heard. Anybody like, come forward and speak. Come forward, please, sir.
Be very brief. I just wanna make a couple comments. Sorry about coming in here late. But one of the comments was, I ran into Pastor Arthur, I mean, Willie Ash. He's the president over at the Pioneer Bay CDC. And he asked me to ask the question. And I, and I don't know if you all have already discussed it or not, but about two leases at the GM at the same time. And he just said he wasn't for sure exactly how they should go about it, because he know that the workforce is out there, and they have a certain time when they're finished. And he said, "Ask, can that second lease be put together, and how? Who do we need in contact to make sure it can work?" And that was just a question he asked me.
That would be Jim and the attorney, all right, isn't it?
And the second one was, I wanna go back to Commissioner Langston. I remember when we first started off talking about the garden club. And it was asked at, I think, the city meeting, how much the city could support the garden club? And at that time, we wasn't in the conversation about insurance. We found out about the insurance later when St. Joe Company said, if you're gonna use this property, it had to be insured. I think, and I'm hoping that this was, I understand that, that the city would support that CDC, because the garden club came up under that five oh one C three in order for it to be a nonprofit holder. The garden club submitted members that came over and joined with the CDC in order to make that work. The plots out there were supposed to be paid for by individuals that would, you know, come in. But we couldn't do anything until we got permission from St. Joe Company. And that permission came with the explanation of you need insurance. So, you know, I don't know how the city, you know, would play into that, because I'm understanding they said that you would have to be leased to the city if you're gonna insure it, or was that just supposed to be a donation? That's, that's...
We're all, we're all confused the same way. All right. Anybody up? Mr. Lowery?
A couple things. The development gym across the street, I'd heard they got a permit for burning that debris.
They asked for one, but we had not.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that...
Yeah, they did. They did ask staff, and at this point, we have said, no, we didn't think it was a good idea. We heard from several neighbors that it's, we had not...
Okay. The only other thing, I just wanna thank staff, the contractors, and, I mean, we've got a ton of stuff going on in this community. I mean, it's just, it's unbelievable, all the, all the projects that we have going on and the rebuild of after Hurricane Michael. And a lot of work that goes into it, and I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Good. Ms. Langston? Okay. Ms. Lowery?
I'd like to acknowledge one of our departments. That's all on social media, where entire crew is now licensed and certified. I don't wanna misspeak, but I believe it was the water department, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, kudos to y'all. That was encouraging to see. I think we're blessed with a, with an amazing workforce. The only other thing I wanna touch on is what Pastor Chester just mentioned. I wanna reiterate the, in my mind, urgency of getting this garden, community garden project off the ground. We have drug our feet. I think all of us are to blame. And it's easy to say, well, St. Joe Company didn't do this, or the garden club pulled away, and it aren't as... But really, it comes down to us. It's our community garden. So I wanna stress the importance of putting this on the priority list. And in the next couple days, I think the city needs to be in direct contact with George Gonzalez and say, hey, what do we need to do? If the city needs to lease that little plot of land, then do it. If we need insurance, cover it. And let's get the garden club back on board, because I, I think they are a big part. They have the master gardeners and can teach skills and stuff. I'd like to encourage them to get back in and reactivate this, this project. It's gone on too long. Other than Hurricane, there was no excuse for it. So that's all I have, Mr. Langston.
Okay. Good, good point. I think they'll get back on board when they know they don't have to cough up money for liability and so forth. So that'd be a big help. Okay, I've got a few things. One thing I talked to Jim about today. I'd like to start going forward, getting a report from Jim on projects that are hanging. And we just talked about one, garden club. We don't talk about them every week. They get forgot. We got, we got tennis court. We got, we got pickleball. We got pay station at boat ramp. We got fishing gear. And it just goes on. And we forget about it, and before you know it's been a year, and that's, that's been done. So ask Jim and/or Charlotte every, every week to give us a report on, on projects that are not under Josh's purview. Things that, that we talked about, we agreed on, that we need to either check them off their list or vote not to do it. And we don't talk about them, they get forgotten. Another thing, we've got a very important PDRB meeting this afternoon at four o'clock. They're gonna be reviewing our two big developments. One for four units that are out of view and the other one's across the street. So I would encourage anybody that feels like they come and listen or have any input on that, that's gonna mean a lot for our available tax revenue in the city. And selling water and sewer is, we talked about the only way we'll reduce the rates or get more on it. So we've got that. Of course, we've got the twenty-one that we talked about this morning. So as Commissioner Langston said, we got a lot going on. And you said we had a lot going on, too. And so that. The other thing, lastly, remind everybody, see, get out and vote today. Ms. Pierce touched on her prayers today. It's, it's very important. Win, lose, or draw, if your candidate wins or loses, let's all pull together like we always do in our city. We can't control what goes on outside of our city limits, but we certainly come together like we always do inside our city. So, so win, lose, or draw, let's pull together and support each other. So that being said, we'll stand it term.
I just wanna add something to it. Thanks, sir. I have gotten an agreement from town U that they're putting on some water coaster classes. So anybody that's interested in that garden, they're free. It's a water coaster, Alabama class, that they're giving free. I just need some people to sign up. I think you'll help them out to get licensed.
Okay, thank you, Chester.